To pray with me, please bow. Father God, we are grateful for another day in this great community that we call home. God, our hearts have been heavy recently with the 20th anniversary of 9/11, with all the sickness in our community and just grieving hearts. God, we are reminded how important our first responders are and all of those who serve to protect us. Please put a hedge of protection around them here, around the world. And God, we pray for our community. We pray for our leaders here at the state and at the federal level. And God, we just pray that you give us wisdom and discernment this evening to make decisions that serve our community best and that ultimately glorify you. It is in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item of business is to approve our agenda for tonight. I'll have a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
We're gonna...Mr. McCord has two items that needed to be added to the agenda, and I'll ask him to update us on the items.
Yes, sir. I have a revision to consent agenda, item number four, with the subtraction of parcel 28 and the addition of parcels 25-2, 21, 20, 13, and 9. Also add item 300 new business, recommendation to approve purchase of three Ford SUV Explorers from Aiken Ford located in Wyner, Georgia.
Thank you very much. With those addendums to the agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace. You'll have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Maxi. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Public participation tonight. We have several people who have signed up to speak, and you'll have three minutes. And I'm gonna ask Terry Wright to lead off and be the first.
Box 35, Cusa. And as I told you before, I was unjustly fired as a poll watcher by Melanie Conrad. And it was addressed to Luke Martin, sent in...well, I'm not sure when it was actually sent. And it read, "In case you can search..." Wait a minute, sorry. "Good morning, Luke. I regret having to send this to you, but we need to poll one of your poll watchers for constantly disrupting the work that we are doing in this office. Terry Wright is constantly interrupting office staff and texts with questions despite being asked to cease." I was never asked to cease from asking questions, and I shouldn't have been. During absentee ballot pickup today, she became argumentative to the point that the deputy had to intervene. Luke talked to those deputies. I was not the one that was argumentative, and they told him that. My question was, does that mean you're not going to allow a Republican to participate? Same question, just the only words I used, I just kept asking it. She interrupted John Scott and I both with questions while we were removing and counting ballots for the scanner. You have two letters contrary to that of the other two people that were there. Office staff also believes she was recording them while they were doing work in the office without ballots visible. That's not true. I've not been asked to defend myself, but I think it's only right that you know what actually happened. And I asked him many questions. That's why I was fired. I'm still asking, and I hope you are as well, because I'm not limiting to those to this room, and neither should you. While we were poll watchers, why were we poll watchers picking up, handling, and counting ballots by ourselves? Why was Dominion all over this building instead of confined to one place on December 21st for a so-called accuracy testing? And why was this not publicly accessible? Where was Vanessa to answer our questions? What were they doing with their laptops? Why were open unsecured scanners lined up down the hall during early voting? Three of us had access. Why were there boxes put in the scanners that jammed them? This caused ballots to need to be scooped out, tearing and ripping in the process. Then, why were the ballots counted without the poll manager present? They retrieved her only afterwards for a signature. Why were we not allowed to watch signature verification? Turns out, because they didn't have...because they didn't take place.
Your time is up, Terry. If you can kind of bring it to a close.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up, if you can kind of bring it to a close.
Well, real quick then, I just...there's another thing there as well from questions from a Texas poll watcher that was here. And I just have one more question. And on the behalf of all the patriots, we are asking that you please take the opportunity that you were given in Senate Bill 202 and ask for the professional review on the part of the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Larry Wright is next.
My name is Larry Wright. I live at 5209 Foster's Mill Road, Cave Spring, Georgia. There has been, I understand, a Freedom of Information request about whether or not there has been background checks done on your interim superintendent of elections. And according to the office we contacted, there has not been a background check done. Even the secretaries that worked, I worked for the Department of Justice and at a local college, and all of our secretaries have been had background checks. I would think that this would qualify as an executive position. And if you're not gonna check to see if the person qualified in any way, or what they...if their credentials are verifiable, none of these things have been done. How can you appoint someone if you have no idea whether they have a legitimate background to do the job? Just being hanging around for a few years, or 20 years, that's not necessarily qualify you or give you the background to do the job of being the superintendent of elections. I'd also like to ask if the commission requests a professional performance review as well. Thank you for your time.
Pam Peters is next.
I'm Pam Peters, 1063 Burnett Ferry Road. I am reading a letter that Mark Swanson asked me to read that addresses ballot dropbox findings. Dear Commissioners, this letter is a continuation of the series of letters regarding our Floyd County Board of Elections on matters of violations of elections laws of the state of Georgia during the past elections. Beginning on July 29, 2021, certain documentation was requested via open records request to determine compliance with the state laws on ballot dropboxes used in the January 5, 21 runoff election. Based on a review of the documentation provided, when compared to Georgia law on the ballot dropboxes contained in the State Election Board Emergency Rule 183-1-14.8.14, 117 individual violations of law were discovered. Provided herein is a full report of these violations with specific details of the violations. A brief summary follows. Seventeen missing ballot transfer forms. Twenty-three ballot transfer forms signed by individuals lacking the proper oath as required by law. Twenty missing ballot dropbox pickups within the specific timeframe of the law. Five missing opening certifications of ballot dropboxes as the law requires. Five missing closing certification of ballot dropboxes. Lack of proper public notice of ballot dropbox locations and opening days required by law. Twenty-three ballot transfer forms were signed by registrars lacking the proper oath. Seventeen ballot transfer forms were missing for the required days of ballot pickups according to the law. Seven other violations of ballot dropbox laws. These 117 apparent violations of the Georgia election laws are in addition to the more than a dozen possible violations of the law cited in my letter to this body dated July 13, 2021. Additionally, the Floyd County Board of Elections Board has been referred to the Georgia Attorney General Office as of 8/18/21 for possible administrative action and/or criminal investigation regarding State Elections Board Case Number 2020-000194 on missing ballots for the 2020 general election. Therefore, I hereby again request pursuant to this letter to this body dated 7/22, a performance review by the State Elections Board as provided by SB 202 Part 5 Code Section 212106 be engaged immediately by this body, while temporary suspension of all current election board members and office staff be issued effective immediately and until the results of the state's AG investigation and the performance review can be obtained.
Pam, are you close?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. Failure to act within your power as provided by SB 202 in the face of these allegations could make this body culpable to the violations of election laws since this body appoints, funds, and houses the local elections office according to the bylaws of the Floyd County Board of Elections. Furthermore, the majority of the voters of Floyd County will certainly voice their concerns on these findings when coupled with the lack of appropriate response by those elected to do so. Please govern yourself accordingly. Respectfully yours, Mark K. Swanson. And I enter this.
Thank you, Pam.
Enter this for public record.
If you'll give me that, I will put it in the records.
Excuse me?
If you'll give me a copy, I will put it in the records, and we'll also turn it over to the election board to look at the charts on this.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah. Next is Angela.
My name is Angela Rabino. I live at 1410 Kingston Highway. I'm here again to address what we've been trying to address for three months. According to public records, the state's Attorney General, Mark Swanson, has already requested for a performance review, and this was possible by Senate Bill 202. My question is, why are we sitting here idle and nothing is getting done? This has been a major concern, not just here in Floyd County, but statewide. What is keeping from doing what the people are asked to get done? There has been undeniable proof of election fraud, manipulation, and violations. When are these people going to be held accountable? It's getting tiresome. And now wanting to keep the people distracted with COVID political push. It feels that COVID is the excuse to keep from doing what needs to be done. The push on the jabs and masks and our overreach. You cannot force people to stay home. You cannot force people to put things on their face or put an experimental drug on their arm. What has been made...that has been made sure of in 1947 when they passed the Nuremberg Code. And the rest of the laws you would be violating, international law, constitutional law, the common law of torts, the American Disability Act, and I'm sure there's plenty more I just don't know of. So again, I'm asking that you do what is right, and you do what the people ask. You have been provided Senate Bill 202, and it is time that this performance review is done, and that you actually start putting true material facts on there when you are doing your live broadcast instead of fear mongering, and you leave people's medical health choices to them and them alone. Thank you.
Lynda Evans.
Box 400, Amherdy, Georgia. I would like to request a professional review authorized under Senate Bill 202. Thank you.
Thank you. David Smith.
This is kind of last minute. I don't have any notes or anything, so I'm just gonna speak off the cuff. I watched...I've lived here my entire life, born and...
I'm sorry. Can you tell us your name and address?
Oh, my name is David Smith, yeah, and I live in Booger Hollow, down in Booger Hollow. Everybody knows where that's at. So I was born here, been here my entire life. I've always been pretty proud. You know, everything goes on in the country, around the world. It seems kind of crazy sometimes, and I've always thought, at least here in Floyd County and Rome, everything is nice and it's a good community, and the government, everything just works pretty good. I've always been proud of it. Well, a couple of days ago, I watched the last little special meeting that was had, the joint meeting between the city and the county. And to be honest with you, I was disgusted with what I saw there. It was embarrassing. I felt like I was watching something coming from Washington, D.C., not from Floyd County, not from Rome, Georgia. All sitting up here wearing masks that are proven not to work, not to stop the virus transmission. What does a surgeon do when they go in the hospital to do surgery? They scrub in, put the gown on, you know, everything, mask, don't touch it again. Who here hasn't touched their mask with their hands and contaminated somebody? It's just impossible. It makes no sense. And yet, we're sitting up here wearing masks. It just defies all logic. And then, in the push for the vaccine, you're supposed to be representing the people of the county. And I've sat there and watched this video. You're talking, everybody, the doctors, by talking down to everybody in the county, the whatever it was, 70% that aren't vaccinated. Well, they must have a good reason that they're not vaccinated. Whether you agree with it or not, if you want to get the vaccine, if you want to wear a mask, that's the good thing about being in America, is we're free to do what we want to do without pressure. But yet, we get all this pressure. Just take the vaccine. I don't have an agenda. Just take it. Take the vaccine. Take the vaccine. There's two sides to every story. There's two sides to this argument. One side, you might think one side is right. Obviously, we all have our own opinion, and that's fine. There's nothing wrong with having an opinion. You know, we all have one, like the saying says. But it doesn't automatically mean that one side is right and the other's wrong. As it's been portrayed, it just defies logic. Again, like I said, I felt like I was watching something coming from Washington, D.C., not from Rome, Georgia. It just...I can't sit by and continue to just watch this stuff going on and not say anything. It just defies...I can't...I don't know what I'm watching here. And so that's one thing. On a separate note, this is all, it seems like a distraction from this election stuff that's going on. I mean, I don't know how everybody else in the room feels, but it's just been...it's blatantly obvious what has gone on here, and how is Floyd County, one of the 159 counties in Georgia, is like, was one of the last ones to total up the election results and get all this stuff turned in. We got counties down toward Atlanta that are so much bigger and have so much more going on than we do here. But we got people from Dominion, you know, working, helping count the votes. We got...there's just so much stuff going on, it just doesn't make sense. And I'd like to see something change and something get done about it, because so far it doesn't seem to be happening.
Thank you, David. Thank you all for coming and speaking tonight. We invite people to do that at any time, and we appreciate your thoughts. And we will turn in these thoughts to the appropriate places and put them as part of The next item of business is, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of our August 24 meeting? Seeing and hearing none, those stand approved as submitted. We have two proclamations tonight. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Waters, who was a small business owner, to present the Small Business Week proclamation to another small business owner and representatives from the chamber.
First, just let me say, I believe in small businesses. I believe in the moms and pops of our communities, and I hope you all do too. They're the ones who pay and support our ball teams, all of our community activities. I know it's easy to go on Amazon's website and push that button and have something delivered tomorrow, but the folks who are serving in our community and their small businesses deserve our business, and so I encourage you to support them. So, whereas for more than 50 years, the U.S. Small Business Administration has celebrated National Small Business Week, which recognizes the critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small business owners, whereas this year is one unlike the half-century that has come before, as we are facing unique challenges together. Whereas in spite of these challenges, American small businesses continue to play a central role in building a strong country prepared for any obstacle in the future. Whereas more than half of Americans either own or work for a small business, creating nearly two out of every three new jobs in the U.S. each year. Whereas Rome and Floyd County, alongside the Rome-Floyd Chamber and Small Business Association, takes the opportunity to highlight the impact of outstanding entrepreneurs, small business owners, and others who support entrepreneurship from all 50 states, Washington, D.C., and U.S. territories. Whereas additionally, we stand alongside these entities in recognizing the small businesses who have navigated the coronavirus pandemic while supporting their employees and communities. Whereas Rome and Floyd County support these businesses as they pivot to recover towards a stronger economy. Whereas every day, they are working to grow small businesses, create 21st century jobs, drive innovation, and increase America's global competitiveness. Now therefore, on behalf of the City of Rome and the Floyd County Board of Commissioners, we do hereby proclaim the week of September 12 to September 18, 2021, as National Small Business Week. So, we're on red, yellow, and white. Jeannie's going to do it. Okay. Tell us who all you have here, Jeannie, so we can get started.
Thank you. Well, we're delighted to be here tonight and to bring recognition and highlight our small businesses in Rome and Floyd County. I have with me tonight Evy McNeese. She is our chair of our Small Business Action Council for the Rome-Floyd Chamber, who is a business consultant with the Small Business Development Center, and Amber West, who is our communications coordinator. And we know that 2/3 of, or 2 out of every 3 jobs that will be created going forward are small business jobs. And so we, our hats offer to our small businesses here for their job creation and what they do to make our community vibrant and unique. You know, the Chamber also wants to remind everybody to make sure they shop locally, because this is what sustains those jobs and what helps make Rome and Floyd County special. And we all enjoy going and visiting those businesses and doing commerce with them as they, as we look forward to just the commerce and camaraderie among the small business people that we have. And so we also know that for every dollar spent in Rome and Floyd County, 67% stays in Rome and Floyd County. So as you hear our messages going forward, to shop Rome and shop Floyd, that is very intentional, and is to remind everybody to recognize our small businesses that made this community so special, and to really, you know, make sure folks are supporting and sustaining those jobs that are in our community. So we appreciate the opportunity tonight. Thank you to the Commissioners for having us here, and thank you to this group that came with me tonight to be part of the proclamation.
Next, it's appropriate tonight with people expressing their opinions that this is Constitution Week. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Hancock if he would do us the honor on that.
How we going? Good. First of all, I want to say thank you for coming, and I want to say thank you for coming in and joining our meeting and giving us your opinion, because that's what it's all about. That's what the Constitution is there for, and that's why we have the right to do the things that we do, and we have the right to be different. So thank you for that. And I took an oath several years ago to serve the country, and I took an oath actually today for the service of the Constitution of the state of Georgia. So this means something very important to me, and I hope it means as much to you as it does to me. Thank you, guys. So let me read this. It says, "Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2021, marks the 234th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnification or magnificent document and its memorable or memorable anniversary and the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week. And whereas the celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution and signed into public law in 1956 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Rome City Commission and the Floyd County Board of Commissioners do by here proclaim this week of September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week. And urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves." And it's signed by the Chair of the Floyd County Board of Commissioners, right back here. Thank you. Y'all are citizens.
Good evening, all, and good evening, Commission. My name is Mary Hannah, and I'm a member of the DAR Xavier chapter. This is our Regent, Linda Easterwood, and I would like to say a little bit about this Constitution Week. The purpose behind this proclamation is to encourage the study of the historic events that led to this document's framing, and to remind the public that the Constitution is the basis of our freedom, liberty, and emphasize this importance of every citizen to defend and preserve its tenets. The DAR has been a powerful advocate to the promotion, awareness, and celebration of Constitution Week. As a DAR, I will be posting posters in libraries, giving bookmarks out to schools, meeting with local radio stations, and newspapers to highlight this commemoration of Constitution Week, September 17 through the 23. I will also be standing in Constitution Square on September 17. Thanks to our Regent, Linda, she told me about this famous commemoration that's located at Broad Street and Sixth Avenue in downtown Rome. I'll be there sharply at 4:00 p.m. on the 17th of September with flags. Please join me to celebrate this Constitution Week. Bring bells if you have them. I'm hoping to get the city's historic courthouse to ring its bell 13 times in order to celebrate the 13 original colonies. We've been through a lot this year. Let us remember and honor what has kept us together and those that have given their lives to ensure our liberties. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Two important proclamations tonight. Our next item of business is first readings that came from the Planning Commission. Art or unip... Art, are you in a position to come and, and read those? There will be no action taken tonight, the public hearing on these items will be taken at our next, uh, uh, County Commission meeting, and, uh, opportunities to speak and to, uh, participate in that will happen at that time. So Art, if you would, item one.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, good evening to everyone. Uh, the first item we have is a request for a special use permit for duplex of property at twenty-four oh nine Maple Road in Rome. This is for tax parcel J fifteen X four thirty-one, um, this is on HTR, High Density Traditional Residential, and this has a recommendation from both the staff and a unanimous recommendation, uh, from the Planning Commission for approval. The next item is requesting a special use permit for a manufactured home for property located at twenty-one Green Street in Rome. The tax parcel is J thirteen W zero zero four, Zone Suburban Residential. The planning staff recommended denial, the Planning Commission recommended denial by unanimous vote. The next item is a request to rezone from Community Commercial to Agricultural Residential for property at seventy-five Imogene Drive, Lindell. The tax parcel is H one nine one one three, the planning staff recommended approval, the Planning Commission had a unanimous recommendation of approval. The next item is also on Imogene Drive at number eighty-four, that parcel number is H nineteen one one four, planning staff recommended approval, and there was a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission as well. Next item is a request to rezone from Community Commercial to Suburban Residential for property at seventeen ninety Huffacre Road in Rome. The tax parcel is F one two zero one zero, and the planning staff recommended approval, and the Planning Commission had a unanimous recommendation of approval. And Mr. Chairman, the last item is requesting rezoning from Light Industrial to Agricultural Residential for property located at Zero Turkey Mountain Road in Rome, Floyd County Tax Parcel M one zero W zero four seven. Mr. Chairman, this has a recommendation of approval from the staff, it also has a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, with that, uh, we present the first readings from the planning staff and respectfully request that they will be placed for public hearing, uh, two weeks from this evening.
Thank you very much, Art. Is any objection to placing all these items on first reading? If not, then let that be done, and we will have the public hearings at our next meeting. Thank you, Art.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We have one public hearing tonight, um, as I will remind everyone, um, our rules for public hearings are that, uh, the item will be presented, and there will be a ten-minute period for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal. And there will also be a ten-minute, uh, period for anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposal. Then the item, the public hearing will be closed, and the item will come to the, this commission for a motion and a vote. So, um, the, the item on, on, to open the public hearing is to adopt an ordinance by the County Commission of Floyd County, Georgia, to establish Floyd County as a broadband-ready community. Uh, Ms., Mr. McCord, is there anything you'd like to add to that before we open the public hearing?
Yes, sir, just briefly, it, uh, I think we know the, the, the positive impact on education, uh, health care, public safety, industry, and other services. This will just clarify the process on any broadband projects that are brought to us, uh, as a single point of contact with the Engineering Department, clarifies the permit process and any definition of fees that may or may not be, uh, applied. So just, again, clarification of the process, and will also help us in any future grant applications that we may have regarding broadband.
Thank you mu- very much, we'll open the public hearing now, is anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this proposal? Clint, you give us your name and address.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is, my name is Clint Walter, I live at thirty-five eighty-five Big Texas Valley Road. Thank you for bringing this up, uh, this is a very important issue. Just today, ironically, AT&amp;T was out at our house, um, we'll talk about the internet in a minute, but we have problems just with cell phones and our regular phone line, and some of the technicians, we've been keeping a log for, since June, uh, we've been having this problem for about six years now, that's how long we've had DSL. Some of the technicians have been there twenty-six years, so they say the equipment is at least twenty-one years old. Okay, now what happens, rural broadband is great, I like the initiative, and I looked at this map, and I wanted to make you aware, in the county article, you can see the, uh, the county, the, the article mentioned about nine percent of the homes, it's actually close to fifty percent of the landmass that doesn't have coverage, internet, and I think it's very important with all the COVID shutdowns, virtual learning, working from home, and just being, you know, up to speed. So what happens is, with AT&amp;T, they'll start out a rollout in Rome, they'll start at the downtown, they'll move out, they'll hit all the communities, the schools, the churches, the neighborhoods, the two-hundred-fifty-house subdivision, and they'll work their way to the edge of the county. All right, we're at Big Texas Valley Road, where fortunately we have DSL, the technicians told us that if we cancel our DSL, they won't offer it again, because the equipment's old and they don't service it. So then what happens, they roll out U-verse, y'all familiar with U-verse? Okay, then they roll out U-verse, and they roll it out, give it to the schools, the downtown, the colleges, the Berry, and all the houses, subdivisions, businesses, and then they get to us and they never finish the rollout. So we didn't benefit from the DSL completion, and we didn't benefit from the, uh, broadband. Now they're rolling out fiber, we've been asking for U-verse, they tell us that U-verse is gone. So now we live, um, I got about, there's about fifty, I've been, I've been working on this with our Congressman, um, I spoke to Tricia Pridemore above McDonald, Public Service Commissioners, it's a really big deal. And, um, we've called the President's Office with AT&amp;T to try to get some help, and essentially they just send a technician out to make sure we're serviced. So thank goodness today they fixed our phone line even, we were getting a hum for about three days. So with no phone line, there's no DSL, or there's no, uh, internet, and so sometimes the phone goes out, which makes the internet goes out, sometimes the DSL goes out. Our neighbors, uh, about a mile, three, three-quarters of a mile, they have U-verse. Now just across the road from us at the eighteen, at the Rocky Mountain Project, they have AT&amp;T fiber. So we know that it's available, and even Parker Fiber Net's rolling out fiber up, uh, Highway twenty-seven, and our neighbors to the, uh, right of us, to the east of us, have fiber, but they paid out of their own pocket to have it done. We can't afford that, it's several thousand a month. Okay, so that's not an option for us. So, um, if you could in any way help with this broadband rollout, this broadband initiative, to make sure it services all of the county. We live on a fourteen-mile road, we are slapped down in the middle, it's mile seven, so three-quarters of a mile on either side of us, and the people that live off the, I guess, the smaller roads, they're never, never, never going to get service, and AT&amp;T's not going to service, because they don't have the numbers to financially justify it. I asked a technician, what would be required? He said, hey, well, you have to replace, it's called a V-RAD and an X-Box at either of these locations, and they told us just this morning that they could roll, or, or that, that they could offer us the, uh, U-verse service, if AT&amp;T would authorize it. Now, are y'all familiar with internet speeds? At a best day, on a good day, we get three-point-two megabytes a second download, and I cannot upload a two-megabyte file to send you something on email. So it is a really big deal, especially if, uh, now I wish we had some kind of reduction in mileage rate, because we aren't getting service, but I, I, I'm confident that you all could handle the rollout, do what you can. Again, I'm calling everybody that I know of at the state level, Representative's Office, just to be the squeaky wheel to get the oil that we need to get our internet done. It is a huge issue, satellite's unaffordable, the latency is good, the data cap is, is just pretty expensive, and it doesn't do the job. So they have a product that they could do, they could fix it, they just don't. So perhaps if a county, if we could give some kind of request or whatever to do that, I would just encourage you to please help us. Uh, I'm working on right now a list of all the names and, and addresses, just to be specific, so I can say we have the exact, this number of people that do not have the service. Most people out there just give, we have a Facebook community group, most people just given up on it. They're like, hey, thanks for your efforts, but good luck, so they kind of laugh at my efforts, but I'm going to try, I'm going to keep, uh, doing everything I can do to try to get a service, because this is just unacceptable. Um, we're hoping Starlink will come out, so, and we're exploring every low, low orbit satellite option, but they're just not available right now. So, uh, I support the ordinance, I would love for us to be a true broadband, and, and I think it's good for business too. Of course, they'll run for the business accounts, but, um, they're never, ever, ever going to help us and residents like me all over the county unless there's some kind of push to get it done. So, any kind of help you can offer, uh, let me know, and I'll be the, um, citizen liaison, I'll volunteer my time, I'll volun-, you know, whatever help you need, if there's any, I'll gladly offer that, just to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is anyone else here would like to speak in favor of the proposal? If not, we'll ask for anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to the proposal. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion from, uh, one of our Commissioners to move this forward.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, a second by Commissioner Wallace to, uh, to establish Floyd County as a broadband-ready community. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have, uh, no resolutions tonight, nothing from the Chair. Um, any Commissioner have anything from any of their committees they'd like to report? If not, Mr. McCord, you got anything from the manager's seat?
No report.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon from the Lake Legal Seat.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Elright, is the consent agenda, um, underway?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hancock, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Uh, there's no old business, there are two items under new business, Mr. McCord, would you like to present those, please?
Yes, sir, item one, consider a recommendation from purchasing to approve bid award to USIC Locating Services LLC for various locating services with Floyd County Water Department. Estimated annual price, and this is a, a, a per unit hour pricing, uh, for location services is estimated to be at fifty thousand dollars annually. USIC was the sole bidder, and we have worked with them previously.
All right, do we have a motion on item one?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters, uh, to approve, uh, item one is in your discussion. If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Hank, or Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two is a recommendation to consider a change order for plantation pipeline, uh, to remove a plantation pipeline at our Richard B. Russell Airport, part of the runway extension. Uh, back in the early seventies, there was a section of pipeline that was relocated, and the existing pipeline was left in place. We had discovered it, it was unlocated when we, uh, did our original engineering on the project, and to remove that, the change order to Bartow paving will be if any petroleum product would be, uh, present or in contact with water, uh, it would be fifteen thousand nine sixteen eighty, and if no petroleum is present, it would be ten thousand five oh nine forty. This would be part of the twenty-thirteen SPOS project for the runway extension.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on item two?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, a second by Commissioner Waters to approve item two. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then item three, that was added, uh, earlier in our meeting, is the, uh, consideration to approve the purchase of three Ford SUV Explorers from Aiken Ford in Wyner, Georgia. Forty thousand four forty-two each, total of one twenty-one three twenty-six, and these will be, uh, made possible by our HEAT grant, and may apply to that program going forward.
Thank you, is there a motion on item three?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Waters, is there, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Maxi. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Under, uh, other business, we did go into executive session in our, uh, caucus tonight, uh, to discuss property matters and legal action, and there was no action taken. Is anything, uh, further to come before the group? If not, we stand adjourned.